We're starting on time, even though I was running around like a madman there for a second. Apologies, I just got back into town, so I'm still trying to gather my bearings. But welcome to Town Council. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the July 21st, 2025 meeting of the Parker Town Council. Let the record show that all council members are present this evening. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the honor of having Mr. Zachary Furry from the one and only Troop 88, who's going to lead us in the pledge. Zach, please come down. Right there, sir, and the floor is yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Furry. All right. Next up in front of council is public comments. No action will be taken on these items. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items that are not on the agenda. This comment period is limited to 30 minutes total time, with each individual allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak. You must sign up ahead of time in order to comment. That sign up begins 30 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. The council will accommodate as many speakers as possible during this time, with preference to town residents. But if council comments extend beyond 30 minutes, the council will continue the comment period at the end of the meeting, prior to adjourning for those signed up before the meeting. As any matters raised by individuals during the public comment are not on the agenda, and other potentially interested parties would not therefore be aware of the discussion of these matters, Town Council will not engage in dialogue regarding any items raised during the public comment. With that, I have no one signed up for public comment. Is there anybody here wishing to address their council this evening? On general items, anything at all? Seeing none, we will open and close public comment at 7:02 PM. Moving on, reports and items from Town Council. Mr. Hendricks, take it away, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, I attended a board meeting at the Parker Senior Center as part of my liaison duties, and then also emceed the partnership of Douglas County Governments on your behalf, and I killed it.
I heard. There's reviews online.
Yeah, so you're out of a job now. And that's it.
Councilman Barrington.
I spent the majority of last week in Columbus, Ohio for a National League of Cities Leadership Meeting. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Wilks.
Yeah, so on July 8th, I attended the new Kaiser Permanente ribbon cutting for their offices off of Parker Road in Hess, which was wonderful, just to see the new building there. On July 9th, I had my Women's Experience Meeting through the Parker Chamber of Commerce. It's a bunch of local business women owners, and we get together and just learn amazing things. So I could go into a lot of detail, I'll spare you all. On July 14th, I had the Douglas County Youth Initiative Monthly Board Meeting. We discussed the upcoming youth congress that'll be taking place, as well as the 25th year anniversary celebration, which is very exciting. So I'm happy to see that the youth initiative has moved forward in such a great way. On the 16th, we had the Parker Police Department's Pool Summer Kickoff at H2 O'Brien, which was great. We had a lot of officers there, and they were handing out swag to all the kids. And I don't remember the dummy's name that y'all do the CPR on, but the dummy was there to teach kids how the proper way to do the CPR, and it was just great to see the community outreach for that. On the 17th, we had the Parker Discovery Park Concert Series, and myself along with Councilmember Franzen were there to do the pop-up and meet and greet and hand out great things to everybody. You can talk about it too, it's okay.
That's all he has, really, on his list, so.
I know, you could talk about it too.
He's got groupies, and he stole his thunder.
I'm so sorry.
He had a power point, too, for this whole thing.
Well, he did a lot there that I'll let him talk about. And then on the 18th, we had the local Indigenous Leaders Meeting for the month, and we're just continuing the conversations about federal funding and grants to bring historic Native American history and culture back into towns and cities all across the nation.
Thank you. Councilman Dyak.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
I think the legal team appreciates you being back. Public hearing openings, I think I was deficient twice? Was it twice? I was not perfect. And I think they're incredibly happy that, you know, the A-Team's back, back in town.
Please, I appreciate you holding the fort, sir.
With the mayor pro temp duties on the 8th, we had a Kaiser Permanente ribbon cutting. Councilmembers Barrington and Wilks were there. Fantastic facility right off of Hess and Parker Road. It looks like it's going to be a pretty happenin', happenin', hoppin' in place. Pick what you want there. On the 16th, I had a Dr. Cog Board Meeting. Just a lot of procedural things, big picture around the region. Usually have delays in some of these projects that get funded. Those second-year delays are going down, so that's a good thing. You know, people are starting to work together and get things going, so that's good. We talked about the active transportation plan, the small area forecast. It's kind of more of a in-the-weeds, staff-focused type of things. And RTD provided their fast tracks annual report, and that's all.
Thanks, sir. Sorry. What's your name again? Sorry. Councilman Franzen.
New guy, still? So as Councilwoman Wilks noted, we did a community outreach event at the Discovery Park Concert Series. It was a great event to hand out swag and interact with people seeing the concert. I think the stat was about 1,000 people showed up the event. And the band was fantastic, so it's a great job procuring a good band, Parker Arts. And that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hefta, please.
Yes, I attended the Parker Police Event at O'Brien Pool and had a chance to talk to residents and our local police officers and the chief, Serapis. And also, I had a chance to coordinate with some local nonprofits in Parker on various matters throughout the last couple of weeks. And I am also back from an out-of-state trip for the last several weeks.
Thank you. As was stated, I don't have anything to update because I have been on vacation. I love this state, but the one thing this state is lacking is water. So I get to go to a place that has lots of water and spend lots of time on a boat, and so I am very relaxed and very, very happy. So it's good to be home, though. It always is good to be home. All right, next in front of us, Presentations of a Financial Statement by Plant Moran. Mr. Timonie St. Andrew, please. Well, first, I'm sorry. An introduction.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Per Section 9.15 of the Town Charter, the town is required to complete an annual audit. The town engaged Plant Moran to audit the 2024 financial statements and to complete a separate review of the cultural fund for the SCFD grant. In addition, an additional audit, called the Single Audit, was also required because the town spent over $750,000 in federal funding in 2024. The cultural fund financials have been reported to SCFD, and the Single Audit has been filed with the Federal Audit Clearinghouse. The town financial statements have been filed with the State Auditor, Municipal Securities and Rulemaking Board, and the Government Finance Officers Association. Last week, I emailed everybody the financial statements, the link to the statements, along with the Single Audit and the governance letter. And Tim St. Andrew from Plant Moran is here tonight to discuss the audit in more detail.
Thank you, Rhonda. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Rhonda. Good evening, Council. Thanks for having me here tonight to present on the results of the financial statement audit and the Single Audit for the December 31st, 2024 year-end. So as noted on this slide, there's really three things I'm looking to cover tonight. One would be the opinion on the financial statement audit, the required post-outfit communications, then lastly, a summary of that Single Audit that Rhonda just mentioned. Before I get into the deliverables, I would like to take the opportunity to thank your team here, Rhonda, Becky, Chris, Michelle, really all of the others that we work with. Everyone was great to work with. The audit process really starts back in January, when the town is looking to close the books. And then we come in late March, April, May. And so it really is a three-to-four-to-five-month process to really start and complete an audit. And so we certainly appreciate your team's efforts. So as it relates to the auditor's opinion letter, we did issue an unmodified opinion. So that's a clean opinion. It's the highest form of assurance that we can provide. And it means that the users, the readers of these financial statements can rely on the numbers on the disclosures within the financial statements. The town did implement two new accounting standards this year, one being GASB 100, which is accounting changes. That did impact the town's financial statements this year, but it was really a presentation and a little bit of a footnote disclosure issue, so not a huge lift on the town's part. But the second one, GASB 101, which relates to compensated absences, that did require a fair amount of additional time on your team's part, and really required them going through the second vacation time and analyzing that time in accordance with the new accounting standard to make sure that the accruals for that second vacation time were properly recorded. As far as audit results, overall, the audit went very well this year. The town was ready for the audit. Everything was provided in a timely manner. And that was really especially important this year with that Single Audit. So we haven't had one of those in the last four years. And to have a two-program Single Audit on top of the financial statement audit and all of that happening in that same March-April timeframe was a lot, was a challenge. But your team did great here. As far as the findings go, we did not have any findings in the financial statement audit. We did have one finding that I do understand was communicated in a separate communication last week, but I'll also summarize that in a couple of slides here. As far as the required audit communications go, there were no significant transactions entered into this year. Again, as I mentioned, your team was great to work with. So we didn't have any disagreements. There were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. Really nothing else to report on that. And then with the federal Single Audit, as Rhonda mentioned, any time you spend more than $750,000 in federal funds, you are required to go through a Single Audit. And this year, the town did expend $5.9 million in federal funding. We did test two major programs, first being highway planning and construction, and that was used for the North Parker Road improvements. And then the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which was used for the Transfeld Extension Project. For both of those programs, and then for the Single Audit as a whole, we did issue unmodified opinions on this audit as well. So again, clean opinions on this audit. And we did have the one finding related to suspension and debarment. And so one of the compliance requirements is that any time you hire a contractor for a construction project, you have to go out and really do two things. Make sure that they're not suspended or debarred, and then retain evidence that that check was done. And as part of the audit procedures, we weren't able to get that secondary evidence that it was performed. So it did result in the finding. Fortunately, it is an easy fix, and the town's already changed the policies, formalized the new policies. And so going forward, I would not expect this to be an issue at all. That's really all I had to cover. So again, I appreciate you having me out this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Council questions for the audit. Seeing none, I just wanted to say, thank you. Five months, sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, Laura.
Sorry. Could you go back to the last slide?
Oh, boy. Yes, I think I can.
Yes.
The federal award finding, could you just briefly describe that?
Yep, so that has to do with that suspension and debarment. The checking that the contractors weren't suspended or debarred before entering into the contract with them, that was performed subsequent to the contract being signed. So that was the finding, that that has to be done on the front end.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
And just for clarity, that's because these monies were federal dollars awarded for a contract. That's not the case for state dollars or county dollars or Parker dollars.
Correct.
Just special, extra steps for the spend the federal dollars.
Yes.
Imagine that. Awesome. I just want to say thank you very much. As you said, five works, five months of work. Obviously, you know, three months of work on your part, but our staff work. It seems very, I don't know. You come in here and you talk for a couple of minutes, and it all comes down to this. But, you know, the value that we find in having a clean audit every year is invaluable. And Parker Finance Department does an incredible job, as you very much stated. So thank you so much for your team's time in justifying what this council knows and hopefully what the citizens know in this community, that we are the best in town. So appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Consent Agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. In front of you, Council, are items 5A through 5J. Do I have any action, or I would entertain a motion for Consent Agenda, please?
I move to approve Consent Agenda items A through J.
I have a motion.
A second.
I have a motion from Wilks and a second from Franzen. Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franzen?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
And Consent Agenda passes unanimously. Next in front of us, a Town Manager Report. Mr. Acting Town Manager, anything to report, sir?
No, Mayor, sir.
We do have the report, the summer report is online for the public dissection. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Awesome. And then, next up, we have ordinances. Item number seven. First in front of us is item 7A, Ordinance Number 9.387 on Second Reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement between the Douglas County Clerk and Recorder and the Town of Parker regarding the conduct and administration of the November 4th, 2025 coordinated election. And today to speak to us is the very talkative Town Clerk, Chris Vanderpool.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This ordinance is to approve the IGA.
Do I really have to tell the clerk to talk into the microphone?
Wow. There you go.
For the record, ma'am.
Chris Vanderpool, Town Clerk. This ordinance is to approve the IGA with the Douglas County Election Office regarding the 2025 coordinated election. If you'll remember, back in April, on April 21st, council approved Resolution 25028 indicating the town's intent to participate in the coordinated election. The town's special election will be conducted as a coordinated election with Douglas County. The Uniform Election Code, the town and Douglas County, under the town, sorry. Under the Uniform Election Code, the town and Douglas County are required to enter into an IGA to govern the conduct of the election. $50,000 has been budgeted in the Town Clerk's budget. If the amount is more than $50,000, a supplemental budget request will need to be approved. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Council, good online, Todd, Ann, Brandy, John, Eric.
One question.
Keep her up there, she loves it.
She looks like she's enjoying it. Do you have an idea of what that spend could be, right? I know we've budgeted $50,000. Is it generally in line with that, generally below?
So right now, I'm going to guesstimate that it's going to be around 65. With the current ballot content that we have, waiting for approval at the next meeting, there's about 12.5 inches. The first five inches are included in that $50,000 amount. And so the remainder are the seven and a half inches. So we'll see how close I come.
So in this scenario, if we come in at $65,000, we would need to have a supplemental budget approval?
Fifteen, yeah.
Got it. Is there any reason that we wouldn't do that now?
Well, we don't, we don't have to wait till next week until we've decided to pass the...
That's fair.
Or not pass the ordinances.
That's good.
And then we can take the action. Anything else, sir? Council, we have to...
Yes, and on that ballot, there's questions from Douglas County and...
So I don't know who all is participating in this election. I don't have that answer.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No other questions from council? Just one, that's based on how many voters in Parker, and how many ballots they're going to have to send out to the X number of registered voters in Parker. So if Lone Tree's asking a question, a charter question, that has nothing to do with the cost it's going to save to us, correct?
So it all depends on how many people, how many entities participate in the election.
Okay.
And the real estate on the ballot. Who has the most real estate probably will pay a little bit more.
Okay. Okay, so unless the county, I mean, I'm just trying to think of what could be asked of the citizens of Parker. So for example, if Lone Tree's running a charter question, the citizens are not going to see, Parker citizens, they would never see that on their ballot. So the only thing that they're going to see is a question from the county and/or a district that would go on that. Yeah, or the state, okay. All right.
And Parker.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. Next up, we will open up for public comment on this item specifically at 7:20. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on this IGA between the Douglas County Clerk and Recorder and the Parker Town Clerk? Seeing nobody jumping up, we will go ahead and close public comment at 7:20 and move on to statements or debate from council. Mr. Hendricks, anything to add, sir?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Barrington? Sorry, I'm tired. Ms. Wilks?
No, I just, obviously, you know, we have a pretty conservative group up here. We never like to spend taxpayer money unless it's absolutely necessary. So taking the steps to, to Councilmember Franzen's point, you know, to already prepare that our Town Clerk, who has the historical knowledge, is saying it's going to be a little bit more, it just gives us a good heads up of what we may be looking at. So I appreciate that, so thank you.
Councilman Dyak?
I have nothing.
Ms. Franzen?
Oh, I just want to thank the Town Clerk. She does a wonderful job, and she's been here many years. And she learned her trade under Carol Baumgartner, who now has a garden, is it a garden?
Creek.
Creek dedicated to her. Carol was with us many, many years. And Chris had the opportunity to learn from her. So I want to thank the Town Clerk for all her hard work.
Thank you, Laura. With that, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 9.387, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.387 on Second Reading.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Hefta and a second from Franzen. Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Ms. Barrington?
Yes.
Ms. Wilks?
Aye.
Mr. Dyak?
Sure.
Mr. Franzen?
Yes.
Ms. Hefta?
Yes.
And that ordinance passes unanimously. Next and last up in front of this council, item 7B, Ordinance Number 1.650 on Second Reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the memorandum of agreement by and between the Town of Parker and the Langley Family Trust, Mary Cookman and Jay Cookman for the portion of the northwest quarter of Section 3 Township 7 South, Range 66 West, Sixth Principal Meridian, concerning the Stro Ranch Widening Project. Today presenting for us is Mr. Nathan Klass, and I am sorry to the Cookmans if I butchered your name.
Good terms, yes. No, we'll get to that. Appreciate it. Evening, Mayor and Council. Here to present to you ordinance number 1.650, conveyance of real property for the Stro Widening Project, CIP 23-033. So in December of 2024, Town Council approved ordinance number 1.634, authorizing staff to proceed with good faith negotiations for permanent and temporary easements and right-of-way necessary to construct the Stro Widening Project. The Stro Widening Project consists of widening Stro Road from Jay Morgan Boulevard to Motzenbacher Crowfoot Valley Road by two lanes to the south with a new bridge over Cherry Creek. The project also includes the extension of the Jay Morgan Boulevard to the south to connect to the South Metro Fire Station. Acquisitions are required from six different property owners for this project. The ordinance presented tonight addresses the acquisition needed from the Langley Family Trust, Mary Cookman and Jay Cookman, the property owners, also known as Creekside Equestrian. This is a vicinity map for the project. I've shown this a whole bunch of times. We're also doing some widening towards the west, on the north side of Stro. The extension that you could see Jay Morgan to the south with a new signalized intersection. We're going to do two lanes to the south, like I said, with a bridge over Cherry Creek. And that covers that. So the acquisitions that we're going to be talking about tonight are RW-4 and RW-4A. Originally RW-4A, just to give a little background, was originally a drain easement, but through good faith negotiations with the property owner, they had recommended that the town acquire it in right-of-way because it will be fenced off with the property, and therefore they can't use it for its intended use, which would be for grazing land. Additionally, RW-4, back in the 80s, the town acquired a drain easement over that parcel, so the parcel was already hindered with that easement as well. So through negotiations, also, we talked about getting that property in right-of-way, again, because it'll also be fenced off. We're putting a drainage structure in there as well, so the property owner won't be able to use it for its intended use, which would be drainage. So good negotiations with the property owner to come to the agreement that we have tonight. In summary, the total cost for the right-of-way acquisition for the parcels RW-4 and RW-4A noted in the previous exhibit is $62,377. Funding has been appropriated in the 2025 Highway and Streets Capital Project Fund. This ordinance is required to approve the memorandum of agreement with the property owners. Staff recommends Town Council approve ordinance 1.650 on Second Reading. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Nathan. Ms. Hefta, we'll start with you. Questions for staff?
Yes, I'm watching that go up every day. I'm watching some of those projects.
It's going great.
Yeah, that's good. So just if I can, indulge me a little bit. Assuming we approve this ordinance, when would the real construction begin on that? Would that be two lanes as well over that bridge?
So are you referring to this particular property and when the construction will start and the infrastructure on this property? Or are you talking about when are the two lanes on Stro going in? I think, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, sort of both. Go ahead.
Both? Well, currently, we're building the bridge right now. So the abutments are going in, we drove pile, we got caissons in, piers are getting poured. So those are starting, we're flying girders in August. So that's, it's, you'll be seeing a bridge soon. You can't see it from the road, but you'll see a bridge soon. But this infrastructure, pardon me?
When soon?
Before the end of the year. I think we're targeting transferring traffic to the new bridge, so, yes.
And the second question?
And so this property, we currently have temporary easements to begin kind of construction. This is kind of a cleanup. We're all kind of on the same page of it all, but the construction in this area has already kind of started, and the fence off of the area has already kind of begun. So it's currently going, and then again, also, with the bridge transfer should be complete before the end of the year.
Before the end of the year?
This, this portion of the work, yes.
And then the final completion of the project would be?
It should be around October of next year-ish, maybe August, September, October, around that area, depending on how it looks beginning of the year.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Laura. Eric?
Nothing.
John?
I'm good, thank you.
Brandy?
So the appropriated highway funds for the $62,377, can you just dig a little bit into that for me on what that actually means? I mean, we know what that means, but...
For sure. Yeah, well, so when we set up the project in the budgeting phase, we kind of had allotments for acquisitions for the property when we put in for budgeting for this project. So the funds have been secured in the entire master plan of this particular project for, I think, a couple of years now. We started design, we've been kind of going through this, different contracts, and kind of chipping away at this particular fund.
of chipping away at this particular fund, but we kind of had an estimate of what we think we would need, and then put in for the request and with the budgeting for the all-in budget for this project. So hopefully, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah.
Are the property owners here?
Not tonight, no. I didn't see them.
Nope, I don't have anything.
Todd? No question. Excellent. With that, we'll open up public comment at seven twenty-eight PM. Any audience, anybody in the audience wishing to address council on this specific item, please let me know. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at seven twenty-eight and move on to final thoughts. Todd?
Thank you for your presentation.
Ann?
Yeah, thank you.